Ready?
Mm-hmm. We just, yeah, should be.
Just double check in here. It says, yeah, we are live, guys.
All right, welcome, and I'll call this meeting to order, and welcome to everyone. Glad to have you all here. So is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Hearing none, seeing none. We don't have any minutes tonight, or delegations, so we have correspondence for action. So I'm going to ask Diane to read the motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that the Council of the Municipalities of Central Elgin has no objections to any LCBO agency and convenience outlet operator in Central Elgin being open during the attached list of statutory holidays in 2020.
Discussion? If not, I know Diane's mic's on, so you're gonna hear me twice, but I'm gonna ask her to call for the vote. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebbitz? Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries? Thank you. Before we read the motion to take them together, it's just information, is there anything there you want to support? Hearing none, I'll ask Diane to read the motion.
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Krebbitz, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that correspondence items number one and number two, inclusive, be received as information and filed?
Call the vote, please. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Krebbitz? Counselor Fair?
A participant has joined the meeting.
Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries? We're moving on to Director of Infrastructure and Community Service. I'm sorry, no, Central Elgin Planning Office first, Jim, I almost skipped over here. And this is the cannabis production in Central Elgin. Jim, do you want to speak to this at all before we read the motion?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Council Mayor called last year, we did a report, just reporting on options for council to deal with cannabis production through its zoning bylaws. That report was vetted through the municipal solicitor, who, from a legal standpoint, found no particular issues with it. Probably a couple of small recommendations, and so, given the situation with the Anava production facility at the airport, staff thought it would be a good time to bring this forward. It's very topical right now, and perhaps move forward with some amendments to the bylaws, to bring into place regulations to govern over cannabis production facilities and cannabis cultivation within the municipality.
Jim, any questions for members of council?
Mayor Martin, it's Tom Marks. I guess, Jim, the 150-meter separation, is there any science behind that? You know, for general farm, best farm practices, there's lots and lots of evidence when they suggest minimum distances between buildings and livestock, et cetera. Do they have experts, or do they just pull 150 meter out of the air? And I'm not trying to be sarcastic there, but is there science behind that?
Madam Mayor, through you to the deputy mayor, we have done a best practices review. We did one at the time that we produced the original report last year, and then we've been going through a second one this year, in anticipation of developing these regulations to see if there's been any changes. We found that through taking a look at what other municipalities are doing, the separation distances will range within bylaws anywhere from 75 to 500 meters, but 150 seems to be the one that most municipalities are putting within their bylaws. We're doing a little bit more research in that, and we're gonna try to contact some experts within the field to find out if they have any particular recommendations before we finalize the bylaw. But we'll use 150 meters right now, as if we come up with a draft, and then, as we progress with discussing this with experts in the field, we may adjust it accordingly and advise council.
Thank you, Jim, and thanks, Tom, because that was my concern, too. I mean, I live 500, I live 250 meters from a road, and I could certainly, that doesn't seem very far, 150 meters. Go ahead, Tom.
Another question is, I think I read there, they're, they're very fussy, they don't want any farmer spraying their crops within five kilometers, because they're afraid of the drift pesticide. And I kind of thought that may prove to be a problem, but then, they have waited now, because I don't think they planted the crop yet, and all the neighbors, the crops would have been sprayed by now, as they've grown up, so they can control their problem with distancing. But, you know, five kilometers for them, and only 150 meters for the people that live there. I think, I'll let it go, I've got some other questions, I'll probably bring up under new business, because, you know, there was a lot of concern over quantity and quality of the water, and there's been some rumors about a well-drilling truck out there, and there's been questions of the number of acres, and whether the crop has already been planted. So I think there's still a lot of questions to be asked about the place, and that's all. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, I can tell you, Tom, they did plant it, it is already planted, they've planted 100 acres. The well-drilling truck was made to leave, because they have not applied, and the City of St. Thomas said there are protocols that have to be in place before they can do any drilling, and they had said they weren't going to drill this year. So those are things that I do know, that we've checked into already, just so you know, that's where it's sitting at the moment. They say with the spraying, that they're going to incorporate it directly into the ground, but I'm not certain how they do that with, if it's a foliar spray. Anyway, anything, any other questions for Jim on this? He will be bringing this back to us. We'll be making no decisions tonight, we're just directing Jim to bring back recommended changes to our bylaws. Yes, Dennis, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, Jim, is there any provisions on restricting where a cannabis or hemp operation can be located, like in an industrial zone, or could we make a special zone? Is that possible for the municipality to do?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to Counselor Krebbitz. The recommended change that we are proposing are to have, in the agricultural area, simply growing. That could be out in the field, or within a greenhouse, no different essentially than any other crop being grown in the agricultural area. As far as production, processing of the material itself into, you know, various, you know, whether it's production of edibles, or whether it's production of cannabis for smoking, or whatever that happens to be, that would take place in employment lands or industrial area. We figure that is more of a manufacturing operation, and Health Canada has some very stringent regulations governing things like odor emissions from those. We have a couple of them in St. Thomas that have been approved. You go by those ones, and you won't smell anything outside, because of those controls, the regulations have to meet for Health Canada. There are some that are problematic, those are ones that were approved under old regulations that Health Canada used to have for individual use. And there was a provision that allowed the pooling of up to about three licenses in one location, so you could have somebody hired as a grower on behalf of three individuals. And they didn't have near the level of regulation for things like odors and that sort of thing. We have two of those in St. Thomas. One is in the old First Street School, and the other one is off of Edward Street. And those ones do produce some pretty strong odors. So those are the ones we have to be more concerned about where they get located, but they don't, there's nothing in Health Canada's regulations that says that they have to necessarily comply with zoning, because they're dealing with licenses for individuals, who could actually grow those at their home if they wanted to. So the government has just said you're allowed to pool those licenses and have somebody grow it for you, and those kind of facilities become problematic. But the new ones that are being licensed under the new regulations are very well-run, and we don't get the odors. Now, I understand the concern about the odors from the outdoor production, the outdoor growing. The only thing I can say about separation distances, the golf course that I go to had a field of industrial hemp growing in it last summer, right beside, was a couple of holes. And if you were walking down the fairway of the holes right beside that field, yeah, you could detect an odor. In those real hot, still summer days, it could be quite strong. But if you got a fairway or two over, you really didn't smell much at all. That was just my own experience, that's what I experienced, so. But as far as these regulations that we're proposing, it would certainly be, any production facilities would be turned towards our industrially designated areas in the official plan, and zoned. But for growing, any type of growing, we're suggesting that would be directed towards the agricultural area. If it's just growing, if that's all they're doing.
Fiona?
Fiona.
So, I'm wondering if, so if we're gonna deal with the issue on odor from a growing, an industrial or agriculture, what about the four plants that a resident can grow in their backyard? And I know of all kinds of yards, because I've had conversations with neighbors who don't like that odor. So what happens now? So we're only able to tell the people where it's being grown outside for agriculture, that they're okay, and we can do something about that? How do we then, do we become the municipality that you're not allowed to grow it for yourself? And how do we deal with that? Because that will, once we, once we deal with one, the other's gonna come up, so we better be thinking about that.
Jim, go ahead, I think you did mention that we can't regulate it, but go ahead.
Madam Mayor, the individual, like, what the government has said is that an individual can have up to four plants on their property that for themselves, for their own personal production. So that is not a licensed production or a licensed growing operation. We're talking about regulations in the bylaw to essentially try to control those licensed operations as to where they can be within the municipality. I'm not sure there's really much we can do about the ability of an individual to grow four plants on their property.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I'm saying, is, is, that's my point. And so, we're, like, what I'm saying is, if we're gonna be dealing with one, we're gonna be dealing with the other, because people are gonna call and say, "Well, you dealt with it over here, but I still have to deal with an odor coming from my neighbor's yard, and when I'm sitting on my back deck or in my backyard, I don't like it, and I don't want to smell it." So that's my question, because when I get that person come to me, I want to know what I can say to them. And, and basically, right now, I'm feeling, all I can say to them is, "I can't deal with you, like, unless your neighbor is able to fill their backyard with it." Well, we can tell them, no, they can't do that, but you're stuck with smelling that four plants, so. So that's just, that's all I'm saying, is that if we're gonna deal with one, I know we're gonna be dealing with the other, because I'm already talking to people about that now. So just, we should be cognizant of it, that will be helping one side, but not another.
You have to realize, too, that this is 100 acres, not four plants. Jim, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a comment. It's, it's one of the things that typically happens when the upper levels of government pass on implementation to municipalities.
Bang on.
I think Central, Central Elgin is going through this, as well as the city, and every municipality across Ontario right now, with the province saying it's okay for restaurants to have patios.
Yeah.
And what they don't take into consideration is now every restaurant, including the ones that didn't have patios before, they all want patios. And so this made a huge backlog of work for the building inspectors and municipal staff all over the province in dealing with this. The province just says, "Yeah, you can go ahead and do it, and we're gonna allow you to extend your liquor licenses," but then we end up, the ones with a bunch of work on our shoulders, so.
On the other side, sorry. And, and again, that's, that's just what I'm saying, is that because of this, we're gonna be stuck with this other problem, so I just think we should be thinking about it, or we should, we should be aware that it's going to be an issue, because I don't like saying to another neighbor, "Well, I'm sorry, it's the same smell, but it doesn't matter for you, it only matters if your neighbor's gonna grow 100 acres of it, then it matters." But when it's only four plants, it's too bad, so sad, you're stuck with smelling it. So that's the issue, I could, I can see coming, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, Fiona and I would say that if they do have an issue with it, they should take it to Mr. Europe, and so it's, it's, you know, that's where the regulations for individual people growing it, it's going to be coming from the upper levels of government, not from us, because we can only deal with licensed places. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I was going to bring, I was gonna bring up under new business, but since we're on the topic, I'm not against marijuana production at all, but where I'm concerned is, the residents out there, there's been very much a lack of communication. They sort of found out through a rumor mill rather than any, anything. The question's that they want to protect their wells, quality and quantity, benchmark their wells, that has not happened, and then when you see a well-drilling truck out there, and no questions answered, again, you, and they also want to know, like, quantify this smell. Maybe it won't be an issue, is the smell gonna last four days, or is it gonna last 44 days? No one has answered those questions, that's all, they're just looking for some information, they're not getting any. And I think it's our job, it's in our responsibility, that's what I'm trying, I'm not against production marijuana at all, but it's just, those people are asking for answers.
And I will say that Mr. Leach and I met with Mr. Preston, Mayor Preston, and Mr. Graves, tried very hard to convince them that they should have a public meeting where these people could be present that have the concerns, and they could get answers to their questions. Their line was, "We've answered all the questions when we sent the letter, and that's it, and we don't see any point, it's already planted, we don't see any point in meeting with them." So we, Don and I just agreed that this would be a test run this year, and we'll see what, what the concerns are. They did say definitely there would be no well going in this year, that they were going to truck in water, that that was guaranteed, so when we saw the truck, as you reported, Mr. Leach contacted them, and they got the truck out of there and said, told Ivana that they cannot drill a well until there are certain protocols, and one of those is doing a hydrological study of all the surrounding wells, which is a protection for them, as well as for the people, because then if someone claims the well is not working, because the other well has been drilled, they'll know exactly what the level was before the drilling, and what the amount of water able to produce after the drilling. So it, it's a good protection, it's an important thing for them to do, and we certainly strongly advise the city to do that.
Sally?
Go ahead, Fiona.
Just one question with regards to, so the City of St. Thomas had sent a letter to the residents of the area, you said answering, or having answered their questions? Was that, because if, if there is a letter that was sent, is it possible for us to get a copy of that? Because I'd be interested in seeing what, what was said to the residents.
Certainly, and I, I'm sorry, I assumed that most of you had received it, I had received a copy, I will make sure that all of you receive a copy.
Okay, I, at least I missed, but I do not remember in the, in the last week or two having something come through like that, so I would, I'd appreciate seeing it if I could, thank you.
It was more than a week ago, or two, it was probably at least three or four weeks ago.
Okay, I, I have no recollection of seeing that at all, but I'll go back and look, but if I don't, I'll just send you an email to say.
I'll forward it to everybody, and then you'll be sure you have it.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, one more thing, we've been told that the crop is planted, but I've talked to several of the neighbors who do not believe the crop is planted, they were working ground there on, on the weekend. And, you know, I'm a farmer, and I don't think, maybe Dennis could tell us, but 100 acres to be transplanted in a day, that's a pretty good production day for tobacco farmer. I don't think it's possible that the crop is planted yet. And if that's the information we're getting from the city, perhaps the city should do their homework and actually get the true answers.
That is what the city told us, that they'd planted 100 acres this year. This is very late in the season to be transplanting, I must admit, you normally transplant after the 24th of May. Mr. Krebbitz, did you want to say something?
No, no, I disagree with Tom, I don't think planted in one weekend.
Hear you, Dennis, unless you speak a little louder.
Sorry, no, I was just agreeing with what Tom had said, I don't think they planted it in one weekend, so I'd like to get the facts, too, and I had heard that there was a well-drilling truck on the property as well, drilling well, and yet municipal water goes right by that property. So I'd have a concern with the wells there as well, thank you.
Mayor Martin, I just have one question, it's Colleen. In the, at the beginning of the document, it just said something about, before submitting an application to the minister for a license for cultivation, there's a communication process that's expected, and the person that intends to submit the application is supposed to provide written notice to the local government, the local fire authority, and the local police force. In that paragraph, does that imply that they have to notify both Tier One and Tier Two municipalities, and is the airport because of this particular location, and/or kind of talking about one particular issue? But was that actually accomplished at the beginning of all of this?
Can you enlighten us on that?
Madam Mayor, that communication is not sent to our office, it would normally be sent to Mr. Leach's office. Mr. McDonough, Chief McDonough, would normally get that notification, so as far as this particular application, I would be unaware if that was actually carried out.
Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, I can't recall receiving a notice of the production of the marijuana, that's not to say we didn't receive one and it was just immediately filed. It is a notice, so there's no approval associated with it, it's just an indication, unless any of the other staff recall seeing anything, but I don't recall seeing anything specifically for this property.
McDonough, do you recall seeing anything?
Madam Mayor, sorry, no, I don't, I don't, not for that particular site, we've seen, we've received several, but not, not for that one.
Thank you. Go ahead, Colleen.
Would it make sense to ask St. Thomas, Mayor Preston, just for a copy of the documentation, just because of the property where it is, kind of overlaps with both of the Tier One and the Tier Two municipalities?
Central Elgin and City of St. Thomas, or do you mean Central Elgin and the County of Elgin?
I meant St. Thomas and Central Elgin, sorry.
Same, okay. Okay, we can certainly ask, but Mr. McCoom sort of indicated that we're the municipality it's occurring in, rather than the City of St. Thomas, who just happened to own the land in our municipality, so we can check in.
That's where I find, I'm confused as to who's sort of the deciding authority here.
As Mr. Leach said, it's just a notice that it's happening, it's not asking our permission, but we will certainly check and find out if we've received notice.
Counselor Fair here?
I'm gonna have Mr. Leach speak, and then I'll come to you.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify Counselor Rowe's question, the City of St. Thomas, in this case, is just the property owner, just like, you know, Counselor Rowe is a property owner, there's no other, you know, government rights that go with it in this particular case, they're the property owner. The Municipalities of Central Elgin is, you know, the government agency responsible for the zoning bylaw and regulations under our purview, so. That does, does not say that, as the property owner, you have certain control over your property, that even the municipality doesn't have control over, so, for instance, the question of drilling the well, they don't require a permit from us, we, if a permit to take water is required because it will exceed the volume set by regulation, then we'll be notified of that, but up to that limit, we have no permitting rule, no involvement.
Well, Counselor Fair?
I'm just wondering, what I'm hearing, it seems that, to be blunt, it seems almost if they're going above the rules and not meeting their commitments. I mean, if they're, if they're not, it borders on being unethical, they're, they have agreed to make some commitments, make some reporting requirements and that, and they just don't seem to be doing it. They, they, if you will, sneak a drilling truck in there to even go against what they said they were going to do a few months ago. I really find it frankly disgusting that they don't follow the rules that they're supposed to follow, and I would try and put some sort of a hold on them until they meet their commitments.
Jim or Don, anything advice on how we do this? Don?
There's no permit required from the municipality to plant a field with soybeans, corn, or cannabis.
Madam Mayor, perhaps we could pass a resolution tonight urging the City of St. Thomas to have a meeting again, urge them communicate better, get some answers, questions answered. And if we did that, I'd be happy to move it. I think we need to sit down and get the questions answered. You know, it may not be a bigger problem, but right now, people are upset because there's no communication, they can solve it if they talk to them.
That was my feeling, I'm fully in favor of sending that, that was what I expressed there, I thought it wouldn't hurt them, it'll just bring everybody up to speed, so everybody knows exactly what's happening. That was my feeling, that they should have the meeting, and they felt it was of no use, so we didn't get anywhere, Mr. Leach and I, when we asked them about those things. At least they did move and get the drilling truck out of there, the city did move on that. But I, I'm quite happy to entertain that motion, so, Tom, you're going to make a motion that we urge the city once again to hold a public meeting with all the people who are concerned? Do you want Ivana there as well? Was that our original intention, was that the grower be there, and the city, and ourselves, and all the residents that were concerned? Is that what you'd like in the letter?
Certainly, yes.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Fiona. We'll give Diane a chance to record it. We will have a motion about Jim's report, too, and bringing back changes to our bylaws, et cetera, so, or revisions, so that'll be a second motion, but we'll start with the motion that Tom and Fiona have proposed.
Madam Mayor, if I may, as a comment. The portion of the regulations that Counselor Rowe is referring to mentioned the notice being sent to the municipality, and also the fire chief and the police chief, it might be worth a phone call just to the OPP, local OPP office, to see if they received any sort of notification. I believe the wording is that they're supposed to go to all three, but it may just worth a phone call to see if they received anything at all, because the fire chief didn't receive anything, Mr. Leach is saying he didn't receive anything, to his recollection. Maybe the police did, maybe they didn't, but if they didn't, then certainly that covers all three.
I will certainly check, we actually have a police services board. I will certainly check. We actually have a police services board on Wednesday. Excuse me, swallowed water the wrong way. I can certainly, we can check with Mike Butler, who's now the acting department head after Mr. Fishley's retirement. So we will certainly check with them and see if they've heard as well, or not. Yes.
Just an FYI, I'm just watching the comments on our Facebook Live, and someone has stated that the well drilling equipment has not left yet. And, and we were told it had left.
Yes, the City of St. Thomas sent us a notification.
I believe this is one of the residents in that area too that has stated it. So maybe that is something we should look into, that if they said it's left and, and quite obviously somebody's seeing signs that it hasn't left.
Mr. Leach, would you follow up on that tomorrow, please? Thank you. We knew that the police hadn't received notice as well. We could certainly include that in our motion, that we had not received notice of this, as per the regulations. Ready, I'll ask her to read it.
Prepare to draft motion. Your worship and council can certainly direct me otherwise if they would like changes. Moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Roberts, that Central Elgin Council requests the City of St. Thomas to entertain a meeting between Central Elgin, the City of St. Thomas, the producer, and neighbors with concerns about the cannabis operation that is happening on the St. Thomas Municipal Airport land.
Any wish to speak any further? If not, I'll ask Diane to call the motion.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Krebitz?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
100% yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
101%.
Councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
And we have another resolution concerning Mr. McCombs' report. Would you read that resolution, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Krebitz, seconded by councillor Roberts, that report CEP 2520 cannabis production in Central Elgin be received as information. And further, that council authorize Central Elgin Planning Office to initiate amendments to the zoning bylaws to implement the recommendations in report CEP 3019 as they relate to the regulation of cannabis in the municipality of Central Elgin.
Questions on that motion?
Yes, I have a question on that.
Go ahead, Dennis.
I'd like to see that 150 meters increased in the bylaw, a larger number. And I think there's plenty of area that marijuana or cannabis can be grown in the area, so I don't think we need to stick to 150 meters. And I'd like to see a larger number in our bylaw.
Thank you. Mr. McCombs, will you, if you want to advise us on what you said, they were anywhere from 75 to 500 meters.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also did indicate that staff do continue to do a best practices review. And so between now and the public meetings for these amendments, we can continue to do that and also reach out to experts in the field to find out what their recommendations are. That way, whatever number we plug into the bylaw, whether it be 150 or 500, whatever it is, we want to make sure that it has some sort of weight behind it in terms of, you know, any applicable science or, or expertise that may be able to advise us accordingly. So we will come back with a number that is based on whatever the experts are telling us and whatever best practices are being made out there. And then if council wishes to increase it, we just hope that whatever numbers put in there is something that has some sort of logic behind it, that's all, just in case this gets challenged before the LPAT.
Mr. McCombs, that, that makes perfect sense. And we won't be terminating tonight than the, the actual measurement. Councillor Krebitz will leave that to them to come back with best practices. And when it's time to do the proposed amendments, then we can change it if we wish, if we don't agree with what they've done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does that answer your question? Any other concerns before we vote? Councillor, Mr. McDonough, please.
So just to confirm that the well driller is there, we'll go by tomorrow and report back to Mr. Leach.
Thank you. That would be helpful. Okay, call the question, please, Diane.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Krebitz?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Roberts? Councillor Row? And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Now, we're now moving on to the infrastructure and community service, the blue box transition. Mr. Brooks, do you want to speak to it?
Sure, Mayor Martin. So I'll just kind of summarize the report here. Recently, the Ontario Government passed legislation to make manufacturers of goods responsible for the costs associated with the Blue Box program in order to fully pay to recover their products and keep them out of the landfills. So, so the transition to what's called full producer responsibility will be taking place over the next five years with draft regulations being done later in 2020. The actual transition of the collection service will start to transition on January 1st, 2023, and will take place over three years, ending in 2025. Aimo, who is in consultation with the Ontario Government, Stewardship Ontario, and other stakeholders, has asked municipalities to pass a resolution on the date in which the municipality would like to transition and whether council is interested in continuing to provide the collection service. Staff is recommending that council transition on January 1st, 2023 to take advantage of potential cost savings to the municipality. That's the earliest available date. It's also recommended that the Blue Box collection program continue to be, continue to be administered by the municipality, should an agreement be negotiated between the stewards and the municipality whereby the stewards would pay 100% of all costs associated with the collection of the Blue Box. The potential cost savings to the municipality as a result of this transition is expected to be in the neighborhood of about $240,000 per year. It would benefit the municipality to continue to administer the Blue Box program to keep the level of service the same as where it is now. And staff have worked hard over the past to try and improve that level of service. It also ensures that there's not a disconnect between the garbage collection program that the municipality will continue to be responsible for and the Blue, and the Blue Box program. For instance, we would continue the Blue Box collection on the same pickup days as garbage. If you have two different bodies controlling the different programs, there may be a disconnect there. So that kind of sums it up. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councillor Brooks?
It's Colleen, Mayor Martin.
Go ahead, Colleen.
Not really a question. I guess I just don't really see any downside to this. It puts the responsibility where it belongs. So unless staff is aware of any disadvantages or difficulties that may arise because of this, I would definitely be for it, I guess. The only thing I can think of is because the trucks currently are sort of mixed in recycling, as long as that can continue and the operations that we have in place today can continue and there's no interference, I would say, from the stewards with the new program as to either what equipment you can buy or the services that you need to provide, I really don't see the downside. So I would definitely pursue it for January 1st, 23, 2023.
Anyone else have any comments? Go ahead, Bill.
I, I also like the idea, just, I, when they, when they come in with their, their system, I would assume that they have to have a certain level of service. And I, I wouldn't not take advantage of the level of service, you know, by pitting our, our level of service against theirs. I, I think no matter what, we want, we want to do it and we want the burden of costs on the producers the way it's supposed to be. So I would, I would, I would support the whole program. I would say, we have already been told that our system is economical, it's viable, it's a, it's an efficient program. So I, so there may be some sort of bidding for each municipality or something at which we would be in on, but I would not reject them just because they wouldn't use our, our services.
Do you have anything you want to say?
I guess I, just follow up at this point. There really are more questions than there are answers at this point. Like I said, it's, it's towards the end of 2020 that the regulations will be drafted. So at this point, we're kind of, you know, we, we want to transition as early as possible to get that cost savings. But at this point, Snap's position is we would like to keep the service, or the collection service to continue to be administered, administered by the municipality. And that goes for whether it's a contracted service or we continue to keep the in-house collection service as we have it now. At least it gives us some degree of control over what's happening. It enables residents to, to address concerns with the municipality rather than through the stewardship.
Thank you. I know it's a fairly lengthy motion, so I think I'll ask Diane to read the motion. And then maybe there will be further questions or discussion.
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by councillor Row, seconded by councillor Roberts, whereas the amount of single-use plastics leaking into our lakes, rivers, and waterways is a growing area of public concern. Whereas reducing the waste we generate and reincorporating valuable resources from our waste, waste stream into new goods can reduce GHGs significantly. Whereas the transition to full producer responsibility for packaging, paper, and paper products is critical to reducing waste, improving recycling, and driving economic and environmental outcomes. Whereas the move to a circular economy is a global movement and that the transition of Blue Box programs would go, go a long way towards this outcome. Whereas the municipality of Central Elgin is supportive of timely, seamless, and successful transition of Blue Box programs to full financial responsibility by producers of packaging, paper, and paper products. Whereas the Association of Municipalities of Ontario has requested municipal governments with Blue Box programs to provide an indication of the best date to transition our Blue Box program to full producer responsibility. Now therefore be it resolved that the municipality of Central Elgin would like to transition their Blue Box program to full producer responsibility on January the 1st, 2022. And that decision has been based on the following rationale. There are no contractual obligations to prevent an early transition. Delaying transition could represent unnecessary costs to the ratepayers of Central Elgin in the form of continued subsidization of Blue Box program costs. And that the municipality of Central Elgin would be interested in providing collection services to producers should a full cost recovery agreement be negotiated as per report ICS 1320. And further, that a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and the Ontario Ministry of Environment, Conservation, and Parks.
So you know, Diane, you read 2022 instead of 23?
My apologies, the motion says 23.
Okay. Any further questions on the motion? None, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Cook? Councillor Krebitz? Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
We're now moving on to the Director of Financial Services. The first one is the impact on property tax collections. And I, I'm going to ask Diane to read the motion and then we will discuss it if you wish to.
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Krebitz, seconded by councillor Row, that report DFS 1520 COVID-19 impact on property tax collections be received as information. And that no further action be taken at this time.
Any questions or concerns?
Councillor Fair?
Go ahead, councillor Fair.
I know, I noted in the report that it has, a lot of the ones in arrears have been, been getting a break, if you will, on this. My intention never was to have the habitual ones in arrears benefit from this or restart the clock on them. So I, I would be quite willing to not continue on with this. It seems that more of it is, is due to the ones that were in arrears before than the ones that are currently paying all their bills on time.
Mrs. Nordeman, my understanding was that those in, in arrears prior to this were still supposed to, that they weren't going to be forgiven for the past arrears. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Mayor. No, the arrears were forgiven in total, only one of the main reasons being that our system does not allow us to separate the arrears very easily. It would have required manual separation. And at that time, we weren't sure of how that was going to, like, how it was going to pan out.
Okay, because that was, it was our understanding, I think, as a council, that those people who were in a year or two years, three years in arrears would still be owing that money. They just wouldn't be accumulating more interest since that time. Is that not correct?
How you stated that, Mayor Martin, that they wouldn't be accumulating more interest, that is correct. They did not accumulate more interest.
But they would still have owed the interest that they had from prior years.
Prior, correct.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, councillor Fair?
Yes, yes, it does. It's a little bit irritating that they benefited from this, but I understand the complexity of trying to break out hundreds and hundreds of files.
Any other questions? Ask Diane to call them a vote.
Councillor Cook? Councillor Krebitz? Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
And now we're going on DFS 1620. This was the tender for the construction of the Newport-Stanley Fire Station. Is it, Ramona, are you going to speak to this, or Chief McDonough to start with?
I'll let Ramona speak.
Thanks, Chief McDonough. Certainly, the tenders were received for the construction of the fire station. The tenders came in substantially higher than what was originally quoted by the engineer. There were specific reasons outlined in the report for that, including we hadn't, we negotiated terms to be a little more favorable to us so that we ended up with only a 4.5 million final tender amount, almost 4.6 million, when the original quote was about 16% lower than that. The overruns were mainly due to COVID-19. The original quote was done prior to COVID-19. That's resulted in some disruptions of supply chains, increased costs of labor due to labor shortages, and the time of the year that the tender ended up being closed. So So the negotiations made sure that the project still met all the requirements of a net zero building once it's completed. Overall, the recommendation is that the fire station be financed by debt financing. And the debt financing at this point in time is at record lows. It's 2% or less. So that actually, when I do the calculations, our total payments for the fire station will end up being about $240,000 less, even at a higher price, over the course of the total term of the debt at a 10-year term. So our lower interest rates are helping substantially to make up for the increase in costs at this time.
And that, my understanding too, is if you set it at now, it'll be that same interest rate. It is set for the full 10 years, correct?
Correct. I have not in my career seen interest rates for municipalities that are as low as this.
Questions from the group? Chief McDonough, go ahead.
To add to that, too, is the, so we have to include the sale of the old fire station and possibly the property down below by the Green Roof Restaurant as to counter the cost, the additional cost. So that'll help us out as well. So I just wanted to add that in there. Lloyd Perrin did a significant amount of negotiation with our contractor to streamline some of the work. So hats off to him. It worked very well. And yeah, I can't see this building getting any cheaper if we wait any longer. But for sure, we're going to lose that loan, that interest rate as well. So I don't know if Floyd wants to add anything to that, so.
Do you wish to say anything?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Actually, it was a team approach here with dealing with the contractor. I'd like to, you know, say that the contractor was very approachable with looking at potential cost savings to the project. So I think the thing to stress to council is that we will still have a net zero energy building, a facility, and a net zero carbon, and not compromise the quality of the building. We'll still end up with a good quality building. That's not going to be a financial burden on the municipality in the future because we chose to utilize maybe substandard materials or things like that. So when it comes right down to it, the savings was brought about by approximately 12 items that we were able to negotiate. The apparatus bays actually originally had a design of four-fold doors on the front and back. They're rapid opening. As a matter of negotiations, we're going to keep those rapid opening four-fold doors on the front of the building that where the trucks will be leaving. So there won't be an issue with response time. But at the rear of the building, there'll be overhead doors where there's not quite the urgency for the trucks to get back into the building as opposed to leave. So that equates to $100,000 savings. We looked at the windows and doors that were specified. We've amended the type of doors. We're still going with triple-glaze, energy-efficient windows and doors. However, the frames are different. They're not wood frames that are covered in aluminum. They're a solid aluminum frame. So again, they have good longevity and we're not compromising on the serviceability of them. One of the fairly substantial savings is due to the topography of the site. We have to bring in a very large amount of fill. And that was originally tendered to be brought in from off-site through some investigation on-site and dialogue with the conservation authority. We feel that we have enough material on-site by excavating a plateau that's further to the west towards the Green Roof Restaurant and placing it. So we'll save, right now, we feel approximately $85,000 in material costs. So those are the big ticket ones. The one of note that council maybe want to be aware of is, if you recall on the original design, there was a, in the gable feature of the administration side of the building on the east side that faces up Sunset, there was a large circular window with a clock in that window as a feature. And that's been removed from the design. So we'll still end up with a circular window in the gable, but no clock. That's a savings of approximately $50,000. We are proposing that we only pave half of the parking lot for the firefighter parking and the visitor parking at this time and leave the rest in gravel to be paved at a later date. That's approximately a $20,000 savings. So those are the large ticket items that are helping to achieve that $467,000 of savings from the tender price, so.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. I assume if in the future, say, an organization or group wanted to raise money to put that clock in the window, that would be something feasible that we could put in later if there was a group that wanted to raise that money. Is that correct?
Yep, we would look at that for sure. We have the architect online as well. If anybody has any questions for her. Janet Stewart's her name from Thomas Brown. I didn't know if anybody had any questions for her.
I assume Janet was the phone-in one, so.
Yes.
I am the phone-in one. Am I being heard here?
Yes, you are, Janet.
Yeah, thanks so much. So happy to attend this meeting and talk about the project. I'm in agreement about the clock. I have to say, a few tears were shed about that. I think eliminating the clock, we've eliminated the potential for some salient public messaging about the times we're living in and how this building is creating a better future. But you're absolutely right. The intention of that clock was that it was going to be put towards the community for three prices from, say, metalworkers or sculptors or clockmakers to create something that was basically a piece of public art that kind of hearkened back to buildings of public importance when they had architectural elements such as clock towers or clock windows. So it kind of speaks of a shared domain and a neighborhood watch, very fitting for a fire station. So we would be very supportive in helping to mount that initiative in the future.
Mayor Martin.
You're muted, I think.
And then Tom, it's my fault.
So the one question that was on the notice, on the agenda, was whether a 10- or a 20-year term is preferred. I was just curious what Ramona's preference would be, I guess. And were the numbers that she had mentioned earlier about the savings because of the interest, were they about the 10-year? I think you said it was the 10-year term as opposed to the 20-year term. But what would be the value if it was the 20-year term?
Ramona?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So I did some calculations based on a 10-year term and a 20-year term, not including the town value of money. I looked at the net amount of payments that the municipal taxpayers would be paying back to pay down the loan. And there's actually a savings of almost $700,000 in total payments if you look at a 10-year term, a shorter term, instead of a 20-year term. We do have the debt capacity, the borrowing capacity, to absorb that. And so based on that factor, I would recommend the 10-year term.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to admit, I was quite alarmed when I saw the original price. Lost a little bit of sleep thinking of it. Spent a lot of time, you know, what do you do if you say no? What's the alternative? And there really isn't much. All the reason staff had done an excellent job. I was always impressed by the design. We've got a good architect, et cetera, et cetera. I think we've got COVID to blame. What do we do now? If we say no, we're going to hope someday to get a better price? I'm not so sure we will. Staff tried very hard to make this more appetizing. I think they've done a great job. Lot of logic. Sometimes you've got to vote yes and you're still a little queasy. But I think we've got a sticker shock here. I think the important thing is, when it's done, everyone's satisfied. This building is going to last 75, 80 years. I don't want someone to be talking about all the things that are wrong with it in five years. I think we've done a good job. It's very complex files. It's really taken a long time to get here through no fault of anyone. So I'm going to support this. I know there'd be, we won't please all the public, but I think there's a lot of logic in what we're doing here. So I'm prepared to say yes to this.
Do you wish me to have Diane read the motion?
Couple of questions yet.
Go ahead, councillor Fair.
I think councillor Krebitz was before me, indicated with his hand anyway.
Sorry, I can't see everybody. Go ahead, councillor Krebitz.
Oh. I just want to say, the five bids that were received on this, they were all pre-qualified bidders. And the, how close the bids are together, it makes it a very valid bid. And I don't think we're going to get anything cheaper. And I'd like to thank Lloyd and Chief McDonough for contacting the PK Construction to get the $460,000 reduction in the original bid. So as Tom mentioned, I think the longer we wait, the price is not going to go down. And I will probably be in support of this as well. Thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Go ahead.
I just want, I also was shocked at the price increase, but that seems to be what's happening these days. And I was, I'm happy to hear about the savings that we're getting. The one thing I was wondering about, I noticed that Lloyd said that we're saving $20,000 by not paving the rest of the parking lot. Now, I'm just wondering, given the area where it's in, if we might have problems with erosion or, you know, want to do that much sooner? And I would, I don't like to increase prices, but I would really say strongly recommend that we just go ahead and do that paving while we're at it right now and make it a complete project. And then, as has been discussed with the clock, make that a community fundraising. And I would be quite willing to start donating to that immediately. But I think that parking lot, maybe, maybe we, you know, to save the $20,000, maybe we should just do it at once and have it done properly.
Other questions or comments?
Fiona.
Go ahead, Fiona.
I was just going to say, Bill wants to spend money, so we should just jump on that right now. Sorry, Bill, I couldn't resist.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'm going to ask Diane to read the motion.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Krebitz, seconded by deputy mayor Marks, that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Centralagin accept the tender of PK Construction Incorporated for the 2020-07 construction of the Centralagin Fire Rescue Port Stanley Fire Station under CERFPQ0119 at the negotiated amount of $4,515,265 plus applicable taxes as per report DFS 1620.
Thank you. I assume all the discussion has occurred. I'm going to ask Diane to call the vote.
Councillor Cook.
Yeah.
Councillor Krebitz. Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Roberts.
Yes.
Councillor Rowe.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you.
I just did that one mute. We're on DFS 1720, the ice resurfacing machine. Anyone have any questions? Or do you want Diane to just read the motion? I think we'll have her read the motion, then you can ask questions if there are any.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor.
Participant has left the meeting. Moved by councillor Rowe, seconded by councillor Roberts, that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Centralagin accept the quote from Resurface Corporation for the sole source, supply, and delivery of one Olympia Ice Resurfacing Machine in the amount of $81,900 plus applicable taxes as per report DFS 1720.
Do you want to have any questions on this particular one?
Councillor Fair.
Go ahead, councillor Fair.
I just, I noted at the bottom, it said that the trade-in value was $5. That must be an error, is it not?
Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Madam Mayor. That is an error. The actual trade-in value is $5,000.
$5,000 there.
I'm saving money now.
Very good, councillor Fair. Any other questions? If not, I'll ask Diane to call the vote.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Krebitz. Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Roberts.
Yes.
Councillor Rowe.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Now moving to DFS 18, which is the micro-surfacing and surface treatment. Would you read the motion, please, Diane?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by deputy mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Rowe, the council of the corporation of the municipality of Centralagin accept the tender of Duncor Enterprises Incorporated for the 2020-17 micro-surfacing and surface treatment in the amount of $449,004 plus all applicable taxes as per report DFS 1820.
Thank you, Diane. And I did ask Jeff today, these are right within budget. They had planned both this one and the next one. So does anyone have any concerns or questions on the micro-surface? If not, I'll ask Diane to call the motion.
Mayor Martin, just one question for Ramona. I know it's in the budget and I'm very comfortable with it and it's fine. It's just which new capital item in the budget data does this apply to? On the, so on the main data tab that was in the file, I'm just, and you don't have to answer it right now, but if you just let me know which one that applies to, that would be great. Thank you.
Diane, go ahead and call the vote, then.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Krebitz.
Yes.
Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Roberts.
Yes.
Councillor Rowe.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
And the last one under this area, DFS 19, the hot mix paving. Diane, would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Krebitz, seconded by councillor Rowe, that the council of the corporation of the municipality of Centralagin accept the tender of Coco Paving Incorporated for the 2020-16 hot mix paving in the amount of $469,374 plus all applicable taxes as per report DFS 1920.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Mayor Martin, it's Colleen.
Go ahead, Colleen.
So I have no issue with the work at all. And I do see the line item in the budget on the data tab. I do see the budget is actually a little bit higher than this particular amount. So I'm just asking if there are other locations that are still to be worked on for 2020, but they'll come up later? Or is this really intended to be all for the year?
Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The two surface treatment and hot mix paving contracts are under budget. We have $1.15 million in the surface, the resurfacing budget. I would suggest to council that we try and maximize this, that budget in 2020. Down the road, over the next three years, we have some high-dollar projects which might eat this budget. Say in 2022, when we have Front Street, we may not be able to put forth the required funding for the resurfacing. So the further we can get ahead in 2020, the better set-up we are down the road, say in 2022, when we may not have as much funding for the resurfacing program. So if we can maximize it now, it will benefit the road. So if we can maximize it now, it will benefit the road system.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'm going to ask Diane to call the vote. Councilor Cook?
Yes.
Councilor Krevitz?
Yes.
Councilor Fair?
Yes.
Councilor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Councilor Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Council Roberts, that bylaws 2491, 2492 and 2493 be taken collectively.
If not, call the vote.
Mayor Martin, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, so regarding bylaw 2493, the lease agreement with Papa Joe's Pizzeria, I, again, I'm all for Papa Joe's using that building for his pizza. And as long as staff is okay with the way the lease agreement is written, it's fine. But if it was myself as a tenant, I would have a difficult time sort of trying to figure out what my payments are actually going to be or how it's supposed to work. I don't understand why it's 11 months the first year and then 12 after that, and there's sort of three different sections with different prices for different things. And I'm not certain that, when we talked about this at the last council meeting, the, knowing that obviously this was June, that there would be a proration for 2020, but this is stating that the contract starts June 1st, but it's still a prorated amount. So I'm just kind of looking for some clarity around the thought behind the detail.
Aaron, do you wish to speak to that?
I, I can't speak to that because it was not I that did the lease.
Okay. Sorry. Who would like to speak to that?
I can speak to that.
Go ahead, Ramona.
Yeah, so just quickly before I start on this one, Colleen, I'll answer your previous question, which Jeff kind of covered. The two items were together for the paving on line 2557 on the main data tab. And with respect to the lease, essentially, the lease was written based on seasonality. However, due to the COVID-19 situation, the force measure clause would take effect, so the rent wouldn't actually start until the, until the tenant opened in the building. And then the rent was prorated monthly. So the discussions were held with our purchasing coordinator and the tenant directly, and they landed on those particular date frames.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll ask Diane to call the vote. Councilor Cook?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Krevitz?
Yes.
Councilor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Councilor Rowe?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Go ahead and read the next resolution.
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Council Krevitz, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaws 2491, 2492 and 2493 be read a first and a second time.
Vote, please. Councilor Cook?
Yes.
Councilor Krevitz?
Yes.
Councilor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Councilor Rowe?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Read the last motion on this one.
The last move on the bylaws, your worship, moved by Council Roberts, seconded by Council Krevitz, that bylaws 2491, 2492 and 2493 a third time and finally passed.
Please.
Councilor Cook?
Yes.
Councilor Krevitz?
Yes.
Councilor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
That resolution carries. Diane, the only thing that we have left now is new business, and I believe some people had some things they wanted to bring up, so who would like to go first?
Council Fair.
Go ahead, Council Fair.
I've, I've had a number of items, and that's why I sent them out earlier. The, the first one, I'm getting a number of inquiries in regards to this garbage tags. I know we discussed it and said we're going to defer over towards the end of COVID and see if there should be some remedial action as far as issuing more or something, but I, I just really want to make sure that gets considered because we're, now that we've been in this COVID, we're now seeing a lot of people running out of tags or running very low. I just had a couple of calls today, so, so that's one issue I wanted to deal with. Should I just go through and just mention the other ones right away?
Deal with one at a time. I'm assuming we are definitely going to look, we said we'd look, we assumed that the amount of tags we'd given out would easily last them to this point in the year. I mean, we're on, we're not even halfway through the year, using double what they normally use. So I know we said we would look at it, but I was assuming it wouldn't be until the fall at the earliest. Others, do you have thoughts on it, anyone else?
I believe I reported back in our last council meeting in May, we had taken a look at, at the summary of tonnages coming to the landfill. So we compared what came to the landfill in April and the first three weeks of May in 2020 and compared those numbers to 2019, and we're not seeing any increase in tonnage coming to the, to the landfill. So for what's up, for what that's worth.
And I think that was why we agreed as council to not look at it for a while yet. Anyone else have anything they want to say on that? Council Fair?
Council Roberts.
Sorry, Council Roberts, go ahead.
And again, I, I agree, it's kind of a wait and see, but, but that's a bit of an indication rate there too, I think, if we're not seeing much of an increase. Those, those were the months where people were, as many people were home than were out. So if, if we're not seeing an increase there, I don't know if we're going to have a need for giving out more tags. Obviously, there's not that much, or people aren't creating that much garbage then, or they're not getting rid of it.
Thank you. Council Fair, do you wish to say anything more on that item?
Just, just the calls I'm getting were in regards to families that had school-aged children that they were experiencing a, a lot more garbage because the kids were, were home and, and the families, families were isolated more at home, so there was no garbage going anywhere else. But we'll see what happens, I guess. It does make sense if the volume hasn't gone up, but there, there are probably individual hardship cases where they really do have a drastic increase, so we'll, we'll watch it as, as council said.
And you had another item you wanted to bring up?
Yes. This is directed to our two council members who are in the county of Elgin. On Centennial Ave, we have just an absolute big area of concern with the railway crossing on Centennial. It is so rough, people are going to the other side of the street actually to get a smoother area. And it's, it's just, there's not even a bump sign or anything, and I've seen trucks go through there and bounce around, or anyone who doesn't know the area has a real problem there. It has gotten really bad at those tracks. The other one is where across from Centennial Ave School on Talbot Street, the former school, they, they patched in there and there's actually a square area of about three and a half inches where the car, the tires are just banging on it in the right-hand lane when you're going east. And again, there's no, no bump sign or anything. You'd think that, you know, if they're going to patch the road, they could do a little better job. And I'm just wondering if, if you and Deputy Mayor Marks could bring that up, because I believe it is a county issue.
Council Fair, and we do meet tomorrow, so we can bring it up under new business tomorrow?
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Go ahead. The first location, so that's Talbot Line, actually north of Talbot Line intersection, so that would be the rail line just north of Format Drive, is that correct?
Yes, yes, it is.
That's, that's Highway 3, that's an MTO road. And the second location on Talbot Street, west of the lights at Centennial, is actually a city of St. Thomas Street.
Okay, and I do know the county, we have, as a county, we have sent letters in before requesting that they fix some of the railway crossings to MTO because they have been a problem, but I, thank you, Mr. Fair, for clarifying that. So it's, neither of them are county-owned properties at all or Central Elgin's.
Correct.
Perhaps, Mr. Fair, you should speak with Mr. Urick concerning the MTO one. What, what were you going to say? Through you, Mr. Council Fair.
So I will speak then to Jeff Urick and the minister, and also with Joe Preston, the mayor in St. Thomas, and see if they can do something about that because it's, it's really bad.
Thank you. Other items in new business, do you have another one?
Yes, my last, my last item was, I'm just wondering, given that July 1st is on the Wednesday, does Central Elgin have any, any bylaw or some suggestion on when people could do fireworks? Because I've heard some this weekend, I don't know, some, maybe next weekend we'll have some. Is there any, any rules, since I believe it is a municipal ruling?
Mr. Leach, do we have any ruling on when people can set off fireworks? It seems to me they ignore it anyway, and I had fireworks going off last weekend.
Madam Mayor, no, we, we don't ourselves, the municipality, have any rulings. You know, the, at this point, people are restricted to the, the gatherings of 10, so it's like the backyard nature. So unless there's something from a fire prevention regulation, nothing from municipal bylaws that would apply.
And I didn't mean I was setting fireworks, I meant neighbors of mine were. So there's no regulation as to when they can do it, Mr. Council Fair?
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Marks, you had said before you had some things to bring up. Did everything get brought up that you wanted to do, or do you have something else you wanted to bring up?
Thank you. Just one topic, but it's consider, my phone, I've had emails, I've had phone calls, texts, seems to be the week for traffic. I've had calls about Kettle Creek and Belmont. Now, some of these are county roads and municipal roads, but they're still all connected. George Street in Port Stanley, St. George Street in Lynnhurst, McBane Road, McBane Line there on New Lynnhurst. It just seems, and it's a constant thing, and you know, maybe, starting to think like my dad, I think, I'm out driving, people are tailgating you. I think it's time we, I've talked to other people, this traffic everywhere. I was in Lambeth and the traffic is atrocious, but I think it's time we, sort of need to have a discussion about it. I know other councils have had the same complaints, but it's probably the biggest thing I hear is problems about traffic.
So here I'm, here I go again, and I'm going to pitch the OPP online reporting. And in particular, so for, for, and I'm sure you all remember, this is not the first time I've talked about it, but the online reporting where neighbors can, if, if you've got an issue in your area, and traffic is an example, your mornings, the evenings when you come home, the afternoon when the UPS truck goes barreling through your subdivision, this gives you an opportunity, you can, you email to the OPP detachment and you let them know what this issue is, this reoccurring problem. And then that then gives the data to our OPP of where these things are happening, and then it allows them to bring in the traffic officers to monitor the area and, and the opportunity to even maybe have conversations with these people who are, are speeding down these streets. The, the big problem is, is we need education and, and, because enforcement, we can't afford enforcement, that's the problem. Enforcement would fix it if we could afford to have enough traffic officers, but we know how many, what is over 400 kilometers of road in, in our area, like we can't afford to enforce that. So I think we need to start looking at it from an education perspective, and maybe one of the things to do, this isn't going to solve all, all of it, but maybe start tackling some of the problems within the subdivisions because that's one of my big, you know, the concerns that I get. And, and like Deputy Mayor Marks, I've, I've got one happening right now as well. So maybe what we should do is, because the, this, this brochure is there from the OPP, is maybe we should be looking as a municipality of doing a mail out or an education with that piece and putting it in our water bills or our tax bills. The, the flyer itself is pretty much self-explanatory, so I don't think we need to add anything more to it, but at least it gets it into the hands of all of our residents so that when these things are happening, they have a tool right away to get that information directly to the people who want it. Because we're, and, and not that we mind, but it's just us passing it on right now. So, so if the people who are experiencing the issues, instead of contacting us, it get right to the OPP who are, who are asking for it. Like at our community police committee, that's what they tell us, that if, if we can give them the data, then they, they know where to go. That, that eliminates a lot of the work for them than just traveling around looking for it, they go right to it. So that's maybe something we should consider is, is, you know, something to that extent where we can take some education right now, or a piece of information, put it in the hands of our residents and, and start getting some data back to our OPP, coming right from the people who are experiencing it. So just as a suggestion.
Council Fair?
Council Fair?
I wholeheartedly agree with that approach from Council Roberts. I think a mailing would be excellent and maybe even post something on Let's Talk, Talk Central Elgin. Because we're getting, I'm getting a number of complaints and we just, we just can't do it. It's not really in our jurisdiction or our control, but I think if we gave, gave them the wherewithal so that they could use their own power and contact the proper people and have good contacts, I think that would be a great idea.
Roberts?
Another thing, and I guess I've thought about this for such a long time, with respect to subdivisions and our collector lanes, and, and I get the concept of that, having, you know, had, having had staff go over it-
having had staff go over it with me, I get the concept of collector lanes coming from other streets and moving traffic out of the subdivision. I think what the problem is, is that I get the planning of it, it's just unfortunately you've got the human aspect to it. So once you get people on those streets, they're not going to be driving the speed limit. So then we have the problem. And then we start looking at these traffic calming to put in after the fact. Just what I was wondering is, in the draft plan of subdivision, should traffic calming not be put in then? Like, should that not be taken care of when the subdivision is being planned? Because we already know that once that subdivision is developed and the people move into it, we're going to have these issues, and then we have to start looking at traffic calming. So why wait? Why, why don't we ensure that the traffic calming is in the subdivision when it's built? And then we don't have to worry about it. Like, this is an issue that we don't need to talk about anymore or as much, because something's already been done before it fills in.
Okay, just to comment, I will ask Mr. Farron to respond to that one because he's in charge of development. But I'm going to, now that we lowered the speed limit to 40 in subdivisions from 50, our bylaw for calming measures might fit more areas than it did before when it was at 50, because none of the ones that had been complained about did it fit. It might fit now more so. And I know we had a group from Port Stanley who were complaining, and Mr. Brooks told me that if they file an official request, then they can, you know, look at that and see if it meets the criteria. So that's certainly one thing there. But Mr. Farron, what about calming measures when a subdivision goes in?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the municipality couldn't impose traffic calming measures when a subdivision goes in. I guess I go back to what is related as perception and what's fact, because we've heard a number of these concerns for quite some time. And when we go out and put the smart traffic counters out, the 85th percentile is right at the posted speed or possibly even below it. So, for example, we have one that Mr. Brooks and I were talking about last week, and I believe it was on maybe Curry Boulevard, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's posted at 40 kilometers an hour, and we received complaints about speeding there in the 85th percentile. So that means 85% of the cars that travel down that road were doing 42 kilometers an hour. So, you know, people think, oh, people are speeding. But when you actually look at it, the majority of the people are at the speed limit or below it. So, you know, it's the same as any road. There's always going to be some that are going to travel at a higher rate of speed even with traffic calming measures.
Mayor Martin, if I could just comment on that?
Go ahead, Colleen.
So I believe that the purpose of those electronic signs when they're put up is to deliberately get people to slow down, just based on what I've witnessed. That's actually what happens. I do exactly that same thing. So I really don't know if that is the best measure of are people speeding, driving erratically, et cetera. Because I truly believe that there is a big issue. We can't solve people's negligence because they, some of them will continue to drive quickly, no matter how hard you try. But I do believe that there is more than the 15% that are speeding. I see it every day, all day long. At least, my word.
Just to clarify, Madam Mayor, I'm not talking about the LED signs that flash your speed when you post them. We're talking about non-detect traffic counters. So people don't even know they're there. So it's not like the flashing sign that says, you know, it's a 50, posted 50, and you're doing 80. It's the, it's the non-detect. People don't even, they aren't even aware that they're there. There's nothing to change their driving habits from what they normally do.
Okay, those, I would agree with them, yeah.
Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Madam Mayor, we've been working our way through some of these speeding complaints over the last two to three weeks. Two streets we most recently measured speeds on, we had traffic counters on Kettle Creek Drive in Belmont for over a week. And we found that the, in multiple locations, the average speed for the 85th percentile was 42 kilometers an hour. Now, we also received complaints about William Street in Port Stanley. And we had traffic counters out there for, I believe it was three or four days, including this past weekend, and we found the 85th percentile traveling on William Street at 42 kilometers an hour. So just to kind of emphasize, this is typically what we see is the perception of speeding, but when we actually get out there to measure the speeds, we're not seeing it.
One question.
It doesn't happen, but.
One comment I've had, and I've had it since we put the bylaw in place, 15% could be going well above the speed limit, or at least 10% could be well. And they're the ones that may be causing the accidents and the concerns. Yes, the majority, clearly, the vast majority are following the rules. It's always the ones, you know, those few that don't, that cause a lot of complaints and a lot of concerns. So just an observation that I have. And I see Mr. Farron and Mr. Brooks both wish to speak, so.
Madam Mayor, I respect your comment, but you'll never be able to curb that 10 or 15%. There are streets in London, and I was on one last week, that actually has traffic calming humps in it, and cars were still, actually, there was one car that went by me in a residential neighborhood, straddled the speed hump, and kept going. So you won't change some of that 10 or 15%. You might get 90% that is traveling at the 42 kilometers, but you won't ever get rid of all of them. And I think it's unreasonable for the public to assume that you will. Madam Mayor, if I just.
Go ahead.
The OPP gave us a report last week for Carlo Road. I think that you received that as well. So they are doing their part where they can with the resources. I spoke to Mike Butler about that. And they're doing their best with whatever they can do with enforcement on the road. So I think that, you know, they are doing their part, so.
Madam Mayor? Sorry, I think Fiona's idea of educating people and putting this out, what we'd like staff to do is bring us back a report as to if that could be put in the next tax bill. That goes to everybody rather than water bills that just go to the ones that have municipal water. So just what would it cost us to do that? Can we insert that brochure that Fiona's talking about? Perhaps Fiona, you could get one of those brochures to Ramona so she can see how much room it would take. And, you know, would it add to the weight? Would it change the postage or such?
Yes, I can definitely, I will definitely do that. And it is, it fits in an envelope perfectly. It's just very thin cardstock, so I can't see it adding too much to it. So, but I will get that to her right away. I just have one other thing with regards to this, and again, within the subdivisions. Because what I'm hearing from right now, and I have a feeling there's going to be quite a few others who are going to be contacting me very soon about the same issue. So it is still, because the other issue within a lot of our subdivisions is with our development, and we have a lot of construction going on. So we have the streets where people are having issues with speeding, but there is also more construction traffic. We have, kids are home now. And so that's one of the other big concerns that residents are having. And that's where I don't know how we deal with that one. And so in doing my daily walks, dog walks, going through these areas, there is. Not only do we have, like, the kids home, but we have more people home, so we have more cars on the streets. Kids are out playing because the weather is better. And then we have all this construction traffic as well. So is there anything, and I don't know if signage is the answer for something like that, but I don't know if even there's a way to have some sort of signage so that, just making people aware that all of this is going around, you know, because we just get wrapped up in what we're doing, you know, and we get in our vehicles and we go. So sometimes if you've got something to kind of attract your attention, I'm just not sure how we deal with that. And yet I think that's one of the problems that we're going to keep seeing because of the development that we do have going on right now. And in particular, in our subdivisions that are very close to being finished, so they're pretty full as it is now. And then we're adding this construction traffic on top of it. So if there's any suggestions or ideas of how we sort of deal with those, I would love to hear it.
The best bet would be to ask Mr. Brooks maybe to look at this and come back with any suggestions or any ideas. Does that sound logical, Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I can, maybe what I can do is, for our next meeting with council, I will summarize some of the reports that have been done for the requests that I'm getting, summarize what the speeds are, what we're actually seeing, and maybe come up with a few suggestions. I guess I'd note that typically in the past, we've seen that signs haven't worked. We've got an electronic sign out on Main Street in Belmont. It works great for the first few days it's installed, and then it just kind of blends into the background for people after, you know, after it's been there. So we can install signs, I just don't know that they're going to be effective. And even further to that, we're really not seeing speed. For instance, in Kettle Creek, we actually measured the truck traffic, the speeds of the truck, specifically the truck traffic, and it was well below 40. If I recall, it was around 33 to 35 kilometers an hour.
And I know signs, we were talking about that earlier today, with the signs for the parking in Port Stanley, and how we've almost got sign pollution. We've got so many signs that people then can't find the sign they're looking for, or they ignore the signs. So if you would bring a report back on that, and then we can have a full discussion. Any other new business? Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. I promised residents I'd bring up the airport, I did. We had a good discussion. We've had a good discussion about the traffic. One other thing, you know, as we're moving into the summer, is there any updates on the Ferning Street?
The group haven't come to an agreement yet. We've received letters from Mr. and Mrs. Terrace's lawyer recently, and letters from the Pattersons trying to work something out. Their lawyers are talking to each other. But that's where it sits at the moment. So there's been no final, and I told Mr. Leach, my feeling is, you know, we shouldn't be discussing it until it comes back with a proposal. That's what we agreed on, that they had to come up with this themselves. But that's as much as we know, is that they're still talking. But they are talking. Go ahead, Dennis, then, Colleen.
The item I have, on Thursday evening, Malahide Township, they had their council meeting, and there was a study that was brought before council by Performance Concepts. It was in regards to Elmer Policing and Malahide joining with Elmer Policing. And in the discussion, there was going to be a savings over a 10-year period for Malahide. And what would that would do? They would be effectively removed from the OPP, leaving a void of the Elgin Services Group, where Bayham would be separated, physically separated from the OPP detachment. If this was to happen, it was suggested in the proposal that the council people, they were going to contact Central Elgin and Bayham to give us their proposal of policing as well. And they assumed that Bayham would join Tilsonburg Detachment of OPP. Now, if this was to happen, what would happen to the costs of OPP policing in Central Elgin? And all Malahide has to do, they have a one-year opt-out for OPP, which they can give any time. If the vote did not take place, it was recommended in the one study that they give the proposal by June 30th to opt out of OPP policing. And that would give one year to negotiate with the Elmer Police Services Board, and there is a saving. The report is on their website, if anyone's interested in it. But it's something that, if we don't act on something soon, should we perhaps ask the OPP for what a cost increase would be if Malahide was to be removed from the OPP services?
This was a good, this is exactly the concern I expressed. We have a Police Services Board meeting on Wednesday. So Julie Gonyu, the CAO for the county, and myself are meeting with Mike Butler, who's the acting department commander. And we are going to go over, he has all the information and the details, and he will explain to us exactly how this would impact the rest of us. I know that the city of St. Thomas have, I've had councillors there asking if Central Elgin wants to be dealt with there. I think we need to, it's very important that we need to consider all the municipalities in Elgin, because our OPP service all of us, and that does make it more difficult. But I can certainly report back to you or let you know after Wednesday what I find out from Mr. Butler concerning this. Colleen, you had something you wish to say?
Yes. With COVID and everything that's happening, different towns, cities, villages, municipalities are doing different things, are looking at different things, I guess. And I was just wondering if Central Elgin had contemplated or started to look into any sort of infrastructure changes potentially that would be worthwhile doing because of COVID. And the one thing that comes to my mind is perhaps, you know, sidewalks. Should sidewalks be wider to accommodate better distancing while walking? Or are they sort of built differently so they're maybe narrower, but there's two of them or something, or you walk on the road and the sidewalk? I see a lot of different things going on in the village here. A lot of people still walk on the road. It will become more difficult with the more traffic as the season progresses. But I think it would be worthwhile to at least become aware of some of the possibilities of things that we could possibly adjust, small or large, in the infrastructure that we are building, especially with all the development going on.
Interesting concept. I do know that Dr. Locke with Southwest Public Health said that when you pass someone quickly, walking, you know, in opposite directions, that there's very, very little, very, very small chance of you catching anything from them, even though you're closer than the two-meter social distancing. That was just what she said. I don't know if staff want to, Mr. Brooks, or Mr. Farron, or someone like to look into something like that or make recommendations, Mr. Farron, especially in subdivisions? Is there anything you would think we should be doing?
Through you, Madam Mayor, our current standard is 1.5-meter-wide sidewalks. So any new subdivision that gets constructed, the sidewalks are 1.5 meters. When you look at the new subdivision and the length of sidewalk as a percentage of our overall sidewalk network, it's a very small percentage. So in order to make a large impact, you would need to spend money on our existing sidewalk infrastructure and widen that. And given, you know, the overall financial benefit to the asset pool, it would probably be minimal. You would be better to spend that money on existing assets that, for example, our road network, that gets a lot more use than the sidewalk network. So we can have a look at it and adjust that, but just understand that that's going to have large financial implications down the road to start doing things like that. For a moment in time where someone might be passing someone on a sidewalk versus, you know, spending money on a street or a road that has, you know, five, six, 7,000 cars a day on it. So that would be a huge financial decision for council to make.
And I have seen, as Colleen said, lots of people who, where someone will walk out into the road, go around someone else coming on the sidewalk, which is very courteous of them, as long which is very courteous of them, as long as there's not the traffic.
Yeah, and maybe there's nothing. But I'm just suggesting that we at least take a good, hard look at what can we do differently, if anything, to address some of these issues. If it's nothing, it's nothing. But I just want to make sure that we at least make the effort to investigate possibilities. And sidewalks is really just one example.
Definitely doing different things in the offices themselves as we go to reopen. There are a lot of changes being, taking place there. But this is something maybe to think about. Maybe we could ask Mr. Leach to, if there's, to come up with a report, if there are any ideas or any thoughts on things that we could change, and what the cost implications would be. Because as Mr. Perrin said, it would be heavy cost implications to the sidewalk concept. Is there any other new business? If not, I'm going to ask Diane to read us into closed, and then we'll have to pause for a few moments while she cuts off the live streaming.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor. Moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council proceed into closed session at 9:23 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land.
Vote, please.
Counselor Cook? Counselor Krebitz? Counselor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
So we'll pause for just a moment if you need to take a break while Diane closes the doors and cuts off live streaming.